Board of Education to order at 7:00 PM. Rochelle, it's nice to see you. Could you roll call for us, please?
Yes, I will.
Brian Molten?
Here.
Katie Thermas?
Here.
Marie Colback?
Here.
Nancy Dressel?
Here.
Fort Ekerkowsky?
Here.
Bob Dunther?
Here.
Patty Shatner? Thank you. Please stand, or actually, yeah, please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The district mission is together we engage, educate, and empower all learners, bridging their passions to pathways to create successful futures and positively contribute to our local and global communities. Our strategies are we will improve educational delivery and learn our connectedness to schools and communities. We will improve services and facilities through innovative and proactive resource allocation. We will build and maintain a culture in which all community members understand, collaborate, and contribute to accomplishing our mission. And we will seek, cultivate, and develop leaders. Board members, please take a moment to review our protocols. And the next item on our agenda, item 1F, is to approve our agenda. Is there any board member willing to make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Katie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Marie. Any questions or discussion about the agenda? All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? And the motion passes unanimously, six to zero. So we're beginning part two of our agenda, the reports, and we begin with 2A, the superintendent reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First item on my list is diversity report of the program that we've had our administrators going through this year. I've asked Trish where Trish is. Somewhere hiding there.
You're welcome.
To lead the report on this group.
Good evening. We just wanted to do a really quick report out on what we are doing. We're starting one piece, one action plan connected to our strategic plan. And that is our strategic objective to start looking at diversity, start looking at inclusion, start really being a proactive, responsive community. We're excited to say that we are not the only ones who are interested in this topic and that the entire nation, but in particular the state of Wisconsin, has a lot of very worthwhile events going on right now that we are tapping into to help guide our action plan connected to our strategic plan. For example, we are attending as an administrative team, a collaborative event sponsored by ASA, which is the School Administrators Association, but also in collaboration with University of Wisconsin Milwaukee and University of Wisconsin Madison that did extensive research and are not only providing a framework, but a process and accountability to really look at leading with equity. It is a module approach. And the plan is that it will take three years to roll out in its entirety. The first module, which we just started, so we all went as a team, we are working through a module, and that is to build a solid foundation for us and to spring from, that will bring our staff and students and families and community along. The first module itself can take up to a year, but the four modules in their entirety can take a three-year process to really roll out with fidelity. The beautiful thing is that they're really helping walk us along the way. So the first step, the first meeting of the minds and looking at research and best practice, really had us examining our own biases, looking at many different identities through how we interact, how we feel, how we represent, how we influence others, looking at gender, looking at race, looking at disability status, looking at economically disadvantaged, looking at sexual identity, and so on. So in that activity alone, we're really getting to belief systems that help shape what we do and how we do it. The other thing that we're doing right now until our next meeting, which is November 8th, is to really perform an equity audit across our campus. And that is looking at all of our practices, what we do, how we service students, how we engage students, how we set up our structures in our school to really help either lift or create a threat to different identities across campus. It's really pretty powerful and it already has changed the conversation on campus. But in addition to that, that is a long-term process, that we are strategically creating a plan to bring people along, starting here and then growing it bigger. We have other wonderful things going on, too. For example, Abby and I attended another event called Innovations in Equity. Yeah, that one. These equity words. Innovations in Equity. And what that did was it brought along the people who were in charge of ESEA, or now ESAA, which was No Child Left Behind, also brings along our IDEA, which is our special ed folks, and really looking at, again, this was the state of Wisconsin trying to drive home the fact that there are inequities in place, that there are marginalizations that are out there, and that we need to be more responsive and more proactive. So we attended that. That's another layer of this. On top of that, all three buildings are doing wonderful things right now. You may have heard about our courage retreat at eighth grade that started some pretty powerful conversations.
Seventh grade?
Seventh grade?
Thank you.
Powerful conversations. Our high school that did the freshman retreat, also powerful conversations. And on Wednesday, we have a unity day at the elementary. So it's one layer, one layer, one layer. The next time we come together is November 8th, and that's when we'll present our equity audit, that we're looking at all three buildings, how we perform our research-based practices, are they aligned with inclusion, and so on. So we're very excited about it. It's pretty powerful stuff, and it will challenge some strong belief systems. It will get uncomfortable before it gets comfortable. And we'll bring you along the way.
Thanks, Trish. Any questions?
Well, as part of the implementation plan, is there training for board members?
There certainly can be. The modules are really wonderful because they're interactive. We are starting here and then we will create our plan, so absolutely will not leave you out.
Any other questions, Trish?
I'm wondering if we can keep this on our agenda for like a work session and hear more about what's happening in the individual buildings. I think that would be helpful.
I heard really good feedback from the seventh grade kids.
Was it really helpful, Lee?
Yeah.
Thanks, Trish. I want to make just a comment about the strategic plan. You know, the strategic plan, which we have a result, and one of our delimiters deals with diversity. You know, it's not a checklist, the strategic plan. It's a living, breathing document that, you know, that we have to work with. And as I'm looking, as I look at an analogy of that, I go to my knee, you know? It was torn apart, the experts got together and fixed it, just like you gave us three days for all the staff to get together and put that plan together, the end of it. But that's just the beginning of it. You know, the experts fixed it, they got the plan. Now it's up to us, you know? My knee is up to me now. How's it gonna come back? And I'm gonna have to work it. I'm gonna make strides, I'm gonna have setbacks. Same thing with the plan, that we're gonna make some great gains, you know, we're gonna get kicked once in a while, but that's the process of growing, and that's what the core planning team has to weed out if they have to make some changes. So again, the plan is not a checklist. It's a working, living, breathing document that is only gonna be as strong as we make it. And we've got 27 results, and this is just one of them. And you'll hear a lot about every one of them as we walk through them. And I think I've got some more communication that will really keep you abreast of what's happening with these episodes here, and I'll talk about that in my next one. Administrative communication. What you can expect here, starting in November, is every Friday, a report from every one of the administrators. And maybe it'll come through my office, but what I've asked them to do is just prepare a few paragraphs, maybe a page of what went on this week, and what are they working on. So it gives you an idea, if you hear something out there, you kind of know that, yeah, I know middle school's working on that, or high school, or Abby's got something going with that. And we're gonna start that the first week, I think November 3rd is our first rollout of that. So Friday afternoon sometime, you'll be getting that information along with a report from my desk also. Next item, we spent, Trish and I spent the other day up at CISA for the report card day, which was very good. I sent you some information, and if we could talk about it, we'd have a lot of fun with it, though we can't talk about it, so enough said there. Middle border superintendents got together last week, and one of the larger topics on the agenda was caseloads for special ed around the conference. And so they are trying to get the special ed directors together to compile some data so we can kind of see where all the schools rank as far as caseloads. I had a meeting with the construction managers last week from Nexus, and we're, as word gets out that we're looking at doing facility assessments, what have you, there's gonna be a lot of knocks on the doors. And when it comes time to looking at professional services, we'll lay out kind of a variety of options and entertain, you know, what have you to get this thing rolling. But don't be surprised if you get approached, especially when you go to these conferences, you know, people will be coming up and say, hey, you got a project going on, and you know, they wanna get their foot in the door. And that's okay, because there's plenty of people out there to choose from. A lot of it is about relationships. We had our second Economic Development Committee meeting this last week, and it was a very quick meeting, it was just talking about progress on some of the planning grants that are around, some of the land use issues around the community, and just an update on some of the new businesses that are coming into town. They talked just a little bit about possible development that could surround us here also. Tomorrow and Wednesday, we have the McGrath Group coming in for their interviews with the administrative team and department heads. This last week, I met with the Chamber on facilitating their strategic planning process, which has been a lot of fun. And it's a whole different group of people there, and we had about 15 to 20 members show up, and we got them through their mission and their core values. And now the next, I think the next two Wednesdays, we'll be working on outcome strategies and results, and it's been a good working group, it's a good community group. And Katie and I have our first employee advisory council meeting next Monday, I think it's at 3:15, right after school. And we have a sample agenda, and we're gonna go through it tonight after the meeting. If it looks good, we'll put it out to everyone, we'll give you guys a copy of it also, so you can kind of see that some of the things. It's really gonna be organizational, this first meeting, and kind of discovering, okay, what do we want this group to be? And then possible brainstorming on possible agenda items for the near future, and how often we want to meet. So covering all the ground rules on our first meeting. Then the last thing I have is Bob has an announcement to make.
November 20th will be my final meeting.
So in lieu of that, just some of the particulars for you to keep in mind, that in the spirit of the law, the board has to make an honest attempt to fill that position. What that means per our policy is that you will solicit, well, I say you, we will solicit anyone who's interested in filling the seat until election time. At that time, on the last Monday of the month, we have to post our notice of election. And what we'll do then is post three three-year seats and one two-year seats, which is the remainder of Bob's term. The top four vote-getters get the four seats, but the lowest vote-getter in that group gets the two years. I've talked to the Wosby lawyer, he gave all that information. You don't have to act on Bob's resignation once he turns it in. It's done. So questions? You know what I know.
Previously, we were able to have people express an interest, and then we as a board could select someone, too? Is that a process out?
The protocol policy says that, you know, you can recruit, you can do whatever, somebody that they want, if they're interested in filling that vacancy, they have to turn a letter in to me. And then you have to buy a policy interview. If you have 20 people, you have to interview 20 people. And then you figure it out from there, or we'll figure it out from there. If you have three people, you interview three people. And it's just a multitude, you know, we'll have to advertise in a few places.
But they wouldn't finish out his full two-year term?
No.
Instead, you put it to election?
It's to the election.
I think the clarifying piece is because we have not posted the notice of our election yet. Had it been posted already, then we would be using the appointment process that would go through his three-year terms, or at least through this election. But because we have not posted notice of our election yet, then the appointment would be just through April. My understanding of it was different than that, but either way, it's fine, but hopefully you have interest. Anybody interested?
So where will you post it, Katie? On the district website?
Well, yeah, electronically, newspaper. In the policy, it mentions three or four different ways, too.
Okay.
And it also said personal connections, promoting, asking, is all fair game.
So should we add that to our work sessions and have a draft of the posting and, you know, discussion of the process?
And I'll dig up some more support information from what I told you, so you can see it, what it is.
I personally would just like to thank you, Bob, for your service for 10 years, a solid decade. I know since I've been on the board, you've been unbelievably important in hiring a superintendent, ladies for that position, and many other things. And I know it was a lot before I was elected, so thank you.
That's all I have.
That's all you have? You have positive recognition, too?
I do.
You do?
Oh, wow. Well, I'm gonna turn that right over to John with the state girls golf.
Well, I will do the simple thing of introducing our two coaches for girls golf, coaches. It cannot be overstated what this team accomplished this year. As the season started, I think just really finding their way through golf meets and learning how to be successful out there, but to finish up the season with a regional championship, a second place at sectional, and our first ever bid to a state tournament is just incredible. So, coaches, I want you to introduce these wonderful ladies, and thank you for a great year for the Spartans.
Yeah, it's still, every time I hear that, it still feels a little bit unreal, and I still get kind of that quiver of chills up the back every time, because it's something that's so far and above anything we dreamed could happen this season. We knew we had talent. We didn't know we were gonna dominate quite that much at the end, so what a joy. I'm just gonna go around the room here, we'll start with Megan, because she's in the front row. Megan, this is Megan Earl, stand up. Megan is a senior, this is her third year playing. She's been a solid varsity contender the last two years, really did a great job. Emma Westmoreland, not only four-year player, also a senior this year, three-year varsity participant, really did a great job. Cora Junior this year, this is her third year playing. Notice we're starting to get a little experience under our belts, it's really fun. Again, another three-year varsity participant, Grace Bauer as a senior, her third year playing as well. And she was also an honorable mention all-conference player this year. Haley is a sophomore, her second year playing, and she was also an honorable mention all-conference, as well as winning the individual honors at the sectional meet, shooting a 77. That's 18 holes, that's not a lot of strokes. And so these were our five girls that we took to state. We have three other girls who were on the team as well. We just left our banquet, they were there, but they didn't come tonight. And I just can't say enough what a wonderful job these girls did, and how much they should make our school district proud at the character they displayed, and the hard work and the efforts, and just really being tremendous kind of spokespeople for our district, and what it means to work hard and accomplish everything you could have hoped for. Well, we could have won it at state, but... We're taking getting there as a major victory.
Can I add, too, there's a little bit of the third year theme there.
Thank you.
The third year theme, Coach Shaw, later, Coach Cadillac, came there third year in this program, working with the kids, so pretty awesome.
Thank you. Do we have any moms and dads we want to?
Yeah, let's have them stand up, too, because do you know that we were the only team that I could see at the state golf meet that had family there for every girl? We had at least one parent with every girl walking at the state golf meet, and what a tremendous job these parents did of supporting their kids, not only throughout the year, but in that last bid to Madison, and that shouldn't go unsaid, thank you for noticing.
That's pretty exciting. I am really impressed, because I shoot a loud game of golf.
I just gave them a bunch. We just had our banquet, so they got some.
Did you get, okay, does Tasia have some?
Oh, I didn't get those.
She's not here.
Oh, maybe.
Oh, where does that go?
Just kidding.
I know, I signed them.
So I will get them to you, my apologies for this. Yeah, there's a way, see some colors here, and ask more, too. I will get those to you. Congratulations, you guys had a wonderful season, and just amazing to see how you kept pushing all the way through your season and built upon your successes. That's wonderful. We'll miss the seniors, but it's nice to see we got some young blood coming back, too. That's great.
Not that it's all about beating New Richmond, but I should also note, then we were the first team in three years to beat New Richmond in a conference meet this year, which was pretty exciting.
Is the coach for New Richmond, Mr. Ziller?
Yes.
We won't. Congratulations, that's awesome. And then we also are recommend, or...
Recognizing.
Recognizing our transportation people. And I know I wave to the bus driver that goes down my driveway every single day, and I'm very grateful that my children get to and from school safely and have someone who keeps an eye on them. And it is a fine art, scheduling that, and making that happen every day, rain, rain, snow, or shine. So we are very, very grateful for their transportation.
Do we invite you here? Do you want to have everyone stand up and introduce a visitor? Yeah.
I'm Dewey Terminal Manager at Safeway Bus. Brandon Strumpke, mechanic.
And Vicki, I'm the general manager there, Dewey's managing there now. I've been spending a lot of my time at one of the other terminals, so I just want to tell these two that I am so impressed and I'm so proud of them for handling things stellar. Couldn't do it without them. The drivers, they were notified late, we didn't get the mail till the very end of the week, so everybody kind of had plans, so you're gonna have to just deal with us. But seriously, these guys have been amazing, so appreciate it. The relationship has been awesome. I mean, we couldn't ask for any more from you guys for the support that we get from all levels of staff, so thank you.
Every district I've worked in, transportation has always, I don't want to say a disaster, it's always been a challenge, I gotta say, it's not even an issue here. I mean, they need something dumb, they can accommodate us, it flows so easy, all except for Dewey's calls at 4:00 in the morning to me. You don't have any power in the city. He got lights on the bus once. So we're entering that season where we'll be talking at the wee hours of the morning again, so anyway, just a great job. It's a pleasure working with the guys.
And it's fantastic that you guys have video cameras on your bus, it's so easy to answer questions about what happened when, and the community outreach events that you do, where a lot of kids get on the bus and serve any family meals, that are just so, it really builds our community and trust in our transportation process, so thank you.
It makes it fun for us to have that different level. It's not, you know, it's personal, which it is, but...
You look like you might add something, John.
Well, the flexibility in the service weekly with the activities and our events is just incredible, working with the team up there, Dewey and Vicki. There's so many moving parts, and they do not miss a beat with us. And the flexibility, even if we request a 15-minute change of time for a bus, the donation to get our kids safely to and from Post Ram every year, to provide those buses for free, and there's been other instances, too. It's just incredible with these people, they're just great.
So I think it's maybe a good time to take a break and have cake, and then come back for your last two pieces, or not?
Yeah.
We're gonna take a break.
I don't have a half hour left, do I?
So we'll take a big recess and enjoy some sugar.
All right, round three of cake, ladies.
2-2?
2-2.
2A, 2?
2A. We're down, we're down from last year, 41 students, we knew that. We're down, I think, let's see, we're down three from last month. And that kind of fluctuation's gonna happen, but when we look at that 40, you know, there's several factors involved with that. And you just have to watch that trend line on that pre-cake, or that early cake, four-year-old program, just to see what the numbers are coming in, because that's a very small class this year. One year doesn't make a trend, but it's a little base our finance is on. So that's all we have there. The last one, item three, school climate measuring tools. Nancy and I have talked about this a little bit. It was more of a, do we want to get involved with some of these different instruments that are out there? And there's a number of them. Last district, we used one every three years, which is a very broad tool. And then we have also an every year one that looks at climate and environment within the district. And they both, the data we got from both was very useful. So we're currently not, I shouldn't say we're not doing anything, but we don't have a real structure where we have a baseline. And that was the beauty of what, we could see how we grew over that district every year because we just kept it running, it was a point of focus, and the board knew that this time here is coming, where are we at, where's our holes? So, you know, I guess the discussion on it is, I wasn't gonna rush out and right away sign somebody up until we find out what the feeling of the board is, plus it's not on our list for the strategic plan right now. And that's kind of the guideline we want to use for bringing in new things, is how does it fit into the plan? And we've got to figure that out. Not that we can't do it, it's just where does it fit? Because, you know, we got 10 things on our ticket this year, and so this may be something we'll investigate through the rest of this year and then get involved. Just my thoughts.
What groups completed the annual survey and the three-year survey in your previous experience?
Well, entire district.
So employees, parents, community?
Yeah. Yeah, a three-year was a very inclusive demographic. The every-year one was mostly employees, because then we were able to get building culture, and with 20 buildings...
Sure.
That was important. And then the three-year one is a national kind of norm, the one where it would put you up against schools of similar demographics.
I guess I don't know enough about what would benefit out of it, or where it would fit, so I'm wondering if we could just put it in for consideration.
for consideration during next year's strategic plan, what kind of option?
Um, I also just wonder if it doesn't fit in with our accountability reports that we're looking at developing, um, because climate, I think, is something that we should be measuring regularly, or like, irregardless of our focus for the year, um, because even if it isn't a focus, it's something that we would want to know, that needs to be addressed, um, so it might.
Well, the first thing, if there's an interest, then let me do some homework on it, and I, what I thought is that, you know, we could handle it at this level for a bit until we're comfortable, you know, comfortable with an instrument we wanna use, because again, you know, we got the wheels in motion for this year's plan, and, yes, it should be something that should be an annual, something, you know, we should be doing, we haven't been, but again, we need to use the, it needs to come through the window of the plan, to, you know, because when that comes on, something else is gonna come off somewhere. But let's handle that way, it's just, we can't just keep piling on the systems. These things do take time, and that, but, if you're, you know, if you're interested and you wanna put it on a work session, I'll bring some information forward, and kinda see what, what it involves, you know, there's a cost to it also.
I'd be interested at least in learning more.
That's, that's consensus, I'll do some homework on it.
I think it'd be beneficial to do it eventually, but I don't, I agree with you that if we started with a strategic plan, there's so many things that we've already got scheduled out, I think it would be wise for us to start to look at the tools, but hold off one per unit, or getting it, we've had one done that we can look back at now, but I think at this point, let's, let's do some of the things we're hoping to do, and then recheck, that would be my thought.
And that was the time, that was the time within this next year, you'll have a year under your belt, this strategic plan, and then you can measure the effectiveness of what's happened there, because if you did one four or five years, three, four, or five years ago, it wouldn't be relevant at this point in time, I mean, look at, okay, and if things are the same, then we got problems, you know, now would be the time to implement it over the next, you know, five, nine months sometime, you know, maybe we'll look at it this summer.
So, moving on to the financial reports?
Oh, that, oh, that's all I got.
Um, so, am I hearing that, that there might be further discussion of this just through our goal for accountability, and that it would just be determining a tool and not necessarily implementing this year?
That's fine.
Um, so yes, moving on to item two B, financial reports. We got a couple.
Hi, Dave.
Hello.
Oh, you're there.
I don't have anything for this item, it's just the standard reports, man.
Are there any questions for Dave?
Anything that's correct to Dave?
No, there's some timing stuff, same as last year, Courtney, I talked about one item, but, nothing out of the ordinary.
Alright, now we're on to item two C, uh, school board member reports. Mark, I think, already provided a little bit of update on the bridging Somerset group.
Uh, that was a different group, that was a chamber. Bridging Somerset will, uh, we're still trying to figure out when we get a date that works, that's separate from the chamber.
So we had one scheduled, and, um, it needed to be rescheduled, just a busy, busy fall, um, so Mark's working it back out to, um, find a new date, so stay posted for that, I know, I think bringing you, if you tend to, Bob was at one, and, um, Patty and I have attended one.
Katie or Brandon either of you?
Um, so, it's a great opportunity for any of us to attend those meetings. Marie, do you have an update from CISA?
I do, uh, one of the most, one of the loudest to me, and I'm hoping that you guys can clarify this for me, uh, it used to be you had to have a bachelor's to do the substitute teaching, but what they said at CISA was that now they are allowing associate degrees to be substitute teachers. They're also working on a one-day or a two-day where they get certification. You've got some people in the community that think it's still a bachelor's, that might be very beneficial for them to know that, so if that's something you wanna put out in, I don't know, maybe in your notes, I, I, yes.
The one thing to note on that is that that just came through with the budget.
Yeah.
It has just been passed, and the rules around those new, um, licensing.
Are still in.
Are, haven't been written yet.
Okay.
So, as, so we are aware of that, um, we know some things are supposed to take, in fact, immediately, like lifetime licenses for people professional. We know of that, but none of the rules have been written around much of this, so it's very, very new, and as soon as we do, be a great on-tap resource, because we do have, we are struggling with getting substitute.
And that I did learn from you guys, uh, along that line, we as a board can decide too, to help with encouraging more professional development, or where you see they could benefit from training, um, saying that could be part of our process, or part of our policy, so whatever would be beneficial, and what would be beneficial in having them be stronger and want to be teachers, whatever it is that would encourage that, I think would be really beneficial. Um, let's see, that was the biggest one for me. Uh, Jerry is also, you know, we paid for our superintendent search, we're glad you came, we are so glad to have you, and now Jerry's gonna offer that service. We, our members, paid members of CISA, CISA is starting to put together that kind of springing service, so, it'd be an option for other districts. Hopefully not ours. Did we have some of you attend the WOW? That was something I wanted to learn.
Tomorrow.
And we actually, we actually have fourteen of us.
Great.
And their, their, um, concentration this time is student engagement and equity, which is just again, that same push, and their first keynote speaker is Kenneth Williams, who is from Solution Tree, he is amazing, amazing speaker, speaks with humor, he'll be very engaging to our fourteen staff, all three buildings are represented in the administration.
So when they go to that, do they come back and present to the rest of the?
Yeah, that's great. It's the plan.
Okay. And then I sent out to all of you the, um, what we had to go through for training, and I thought, you know, that could help us put together reports, and it gave, giving the questions that we might ask, if we were going to write those reports, so that I hope is something we can put on when we start to develop those, which I hope is sooner than later. Always interesting.
Um, Mark provided a little bit of a feedback on the employee council, Katie, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I'm just looking forward to it, I think, um, it's gonna be a great sounding board for people to address, um, whatever policies to have that are, like, I think it's going to be, in my opinion, I'm hoping that they will want to help within the graph grid that will be coming through, because I think that is vitally important, that people have that voice, and that they go back to their buildings and get input and feedback on what's working, what's not working, and then figure out the best way to address, so, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Um, I sat in for Brian this month on the Memorial Scholarship Fund, um, that group is currently reviewing their application and the rubric for scoring applications. They also shared the essay questions with high school English teachers, so that students, uh, have the opportunity to really invest in writing their, um, essays and getting feedback on them, um, and they are doing fifty-fifty raffle tickets at different games to raise money. Uh, the homecoming game was particularly successful, um, and it was not, oh, there, the person did not claim it, um, so.
I wondered if he read this wrong ticket. Because I'm totally out of the series from what people next to me were.
It's one way to do it.
It just seems kind of odd, not declaring that largely.
Could be, there also were people who came through and said, if you pull mine, don't call it. So there, so it could have been a person whose number was called and purposely didn't, I don't think.
Well, he also said the color of the ticket, and it wasn't the color of the ones that were wrong.
I'm just curious, if it's the, what possibility.
You should attend the next meeting, Marie, I'll let you know when it is. Um, the Memorial Scholarship Fund Committee is also looking for a way to, um, see if they can connect, connect, contacting previous recipients, so we've been working with, um, Mark and Jenna to try and figure out our policies around directory information, um, and then they also were wondering about the district newsletter, and how they can work with the district to promote, um, the scholarship and recipients in the process for applying, um, so Mark will have an update on that later. Any other questions on that? Alright, and then Mark, you had a little bit of an update previously on the Village of Somerset Economic Development Council, do you have anything to add to that? Okay, next round two D, our student representatives.
Well, it's been a crazy busy month at the high school particularly, uh, particularly, and, is it turned on?
It's coming.
Okay. Um, we have been very, very busy, we just are relieving ourselves from homecoming. It has, it's been by far one of the most successful homecomings that we've had, probably.
The best I've ever had.
And from many teachers, they have said that it's been the best, since they've been here as well. One thing that happened last Monday was our academic excellence ceremony, we had many people show up to this, there was, um, I think almost everyone there had parents there, and it was great to see all the kids who are successful in their academics, and even though there's a lot of people in these pictures, about half of them that were called out for it in there, so that just shows that all the people who are represented here either had a three-point-five GPA or above, so, just that.
Uh, one of the things we did this year was we changed our tailgate party from Friday night before the football game to Thursday night, um, we had it at Larry Forest Park, and it was a huge success, we had a ton of people there, and we actually ran out of food by the end of it, which has never happened before, um, but here's a couple pictures, we had the football game, football team, um, signing autographs, which was fun, um, we had the girls' golf team there also signing, we had cheerleaders, and it's just a ton of fun.
We also had, um, the high school band, contraband playing at tailgate party as well. Uh, this is our homecoming royalty, right here we have the victory king and queen, Brooke Beuthling and Garrett Hekt, and then here's a picture of the homecoming king and queen.
Congratulations.
And then our homecoming parade, this is by far one of the coolest things that I've ever experienced here, and it was, I'd like to say all thanks to Bob.
Yeah, thank you, Bob.
Without his help, we would not have been able to put this on. Um, this year we had each grade at the high school create a float for the parade, as well as the elementary school, as you can see here, their trailer was packed full of screaming elementary school leaders. Um, we also had several different sports teams lock in the parade, and it was a huge success, and we have gotten great feedback from the community, and we are trying to make it even better for next year.
Um, this year we had even more fun at our pep fest, um, during the school day, so we had, on Monday, right away to start off the week, we had a breakfast in the morning, we served pancakes and sausage and stuff to all the kids, um, and then we had a pep fest right away where we had the elementary and middle schools come down, which was a really fun way to kinda get the whole district involved, um, and we just played a lot of games and announced the homecoming court, and all that stuff. And then on Friday, we had our big, kinda entire, uh, homecoming day, where we, the dance team performed, cheerleaders performed, all the greats put on their skits, um, and then we had powder puff football later in the day, um, boys volleyball, all that good stuff.
Uh, before you go, can I just really quick, um, I just wanted to be here tonight, um, to recognize these guys specifically, but our student council of high school really puts, this is like, I was trying to think of a good analogy today, um, before I came, and the best I could come up with is like, this is like our Super Bowl for our student council, I mean, the amount of time and effort that they, these guys put into planning that entire week, um, from the pep fest to the getting donations, because everything is run off of donations, we hardly put any money into this, um, and we raised over seven hundred dollars at our tailgate party, it was amazing, um, and they make tons of phone calls to businesses and do all these contacts, and, and I've told them this before, but they do far beyond what some adults will ever do as far as making those connections and doing those things, so, and these two really step up and like, take the lead, and they say, what do we need to do, what do you got for this? They do, they did, helped do the parade lineups, they, um, contacted all these businesses, went in person to deliver them, called them on phones, uh, we worked with the police department, with the village, um, trying to coordinate a parade route that would be successful, and with the least amount of interruption as possible, um, and bringing in the fire department and making that connection, um, I'm there to help guide them, but they really are the ones that make those, and really put all of that, make those connections and do those extra things, and so, I think that Hunter, being the president, Emma's our vice president, student council, I don't know if they've ever fully told you that those were their titles, but they have those titles for a reason, and they do a great job, um, and it is, really was so awesome, and to have such an, more, uh, excuse me, a supportive administration this year, with all the great things that we did with our community, has been awesome, so hopefully, if you didn't get to come see it this year, next year, um, the parade, the tailgate party, it was super great, I mean, granted, our weather was amazing the last two years, it was either freezing or raining, or both, and so, um, or the last three years, I guess this is their fourth year of the tailgate party, and so, it was really great, um, but yeah, they just deserve a ton of credit, um, and we had a little hiccup along the way, and so really thanks, Bob, for pulling through and helping us out with getting that parade going, we really appreciate that, so, thank you.
And I think that's another thing I'd like to comment on, is the amount of comments, positive comments from the people I heard from in the community, and as we were stopping cars, uh, when we explained what was going on, someone pulled, I don't think they were from the community, pulled the cars outside, and then watched them get out and just observed the parade, you know, all cool. So we didn't have anybody that was upset at all about being inconvenienced for a couple seconds, um, and it was, I mean, it was awesome, and, uh, just the feedback, and are you guys doing this next year, I said, heck yeah. We roll out the gates, everyone made it back alive, so, I don't think we even sprained an ankle or anything, so, yeah, so I mean, awesome job, you guys.
Did student council paint all the windows in town too? Who did that?
Sports teams. Yeah, we coordinated it out and assigned sports teams, so we connected with businesses, and they connected with businesses, mind you. So if you know a business that hasn't been cleaned yet, we know RCU, I think, has a couple windows that we're working on that to get those cleaned, we thought we cleaned them all, we, but we'll finish up this.
I know my kids really enjoyed the tailgate party too, and I did also, so thank you, it was a wonderful event, and so great to get elementary and middle school kids involved, and highlight the many different talents of our students, and bring our community together in that way, it's wonderful.
And I'm sorry we were doing the fields right at the same time, they were supposed to be there the day before, we got some rain, so I was like, yeah, but.
That was a crazy week, crazy week, we glad that was over.
Yeah, we came back on Monday to clean the hallways, we were just running through the halls, tearing down posters.
I've never slept so much in one weekend.
You have too, which is exhausting.
It was fun though.
Good job.
Um, after that, we also had our seventh grade courage retreat, Donovan Middle School, and then our freshman retreat at the high school. Um, I personally attended the freshman retreat, and that was about respect, we've been doing this for a while now, and even from my freshman year, I can see like, the same message, and how they get it across to the students, it's really good, um, for a lot of the students, it's very emotional, and I think that it brings together old relationships, and really helps bring a whole group together.
I think so too, yeah.
I think that's all.
Oh, I can talk a little bit about the courage retreat, I was at the courage retreat at the middle school last Thursday, um, and I had never participated in that when I was in middle school, but what I saw there was a really good message, just to, um, kind of build students' self-esteem as they're getting ready to go into high school. Um, so again, like this, I think it really brought their class together, um. And yeah, it's such a really good message.
I guess also we should talk about our sports teams. The football team sadly did not make it to playoffs this year, but we were already in the way of this week, getting pushed as hard as we possibly could. The volley team, volleyball team lost in the first round as well. And obviously you heard a lot about the success of the girls state, state golf meet. Cross country had sectionals last week and they.
They did okay, but that was their last meet.
It's called Anya's, uh, on crutches.
Yeah.
She went in her, her fall fire.
Yeah. But she did run, so it's good for her.
Um, boys soccer sadly lost in the first round of playoffs against winner as well. And I think, I think the only other thing we have to add is that the play at the high school fed around the roof is less than a month away from.
And we had, um, set the bus.
Oh yeah.
Was it homecoming meeting?
Yep, it was that.
Yeah. Um, for the food pantry and we got a lot of donations together. It was like a homeroom competition kind of to see which class could get the most donations in. And then we also are doing meat raffles every Friday. Student council along with, I think NHS is volunteering at these meat raffles to sponsor the food pantry at, um, not just cafe, thank you. So yeah.
Great job.
Thank you.
All right, it is now an opportunity on our agenda for public comments. Anyone wishing to participate must have completed a red card located on that table. I don't believe we've received any red cards at this point. Is there anyone that was wishing to speak this evening during the public conversation? All right, seeing none, we will proceed then to item four, educational delivery and learner connectedness. Item four A is the 2017 assessment summary. Trish, did you have anything to add?
I just want to let you know I updated the doc from our work session after some input. We had some comparative, you know, the Ford is two years old. And so we had the two years of data at the middle school. I added that across the middle border so you could see kind of comparable growth across the middle border, how the schools in our area kind of stacked up for our Ford exam as well as ACT. We did have some input from our building leadership team at the high school with some additional data they wanted on there and I'm not sure if it made it on the final copy as we are talking about it. But they really did a deep dive into that data because they have Usopp Corey's presentation and you know how our high school English PLC is very data driven and very, they break down to the smallest of details. And their score when they, when the state takes ELA, which is reading, writing and English, and they put it together. So very different than the individual scores for the ACT, which are very traditional. Most of us took that, most of us had those individual scores. But when the state of Wisconsin pulls together English, reading and writing, they create a composite ELA score. And that's what you saw how we stacked up with our ELA score. They were dumbfounded because of the hard work they've done and how well their kids are doing. So they pulled it all back apart, connected to DPI and connected to the middle border and found that they were right at the top, right behind our, one of the top schools. But with reading and English, it was the writing score that really fell. And so now they're examining why and what's next for the kids and doing some wonderful coaching collaboration at the high school where English is working with social studies, is working with and so on and so on and so on. And in fact, in our last mentor training, we, we support our new district teachers once a month and we had some wonderful report outs from our new teachers at the high school saying that collaboration between our instructional coaches that are doing their thing at the high school and really working in kind of that writing component across all content areas. So work is already being done to make a difference based on what that data showed from last year's juniors. Next year, when the report cards come out, which we can't talk about results yet because they are embargoed at least for probably a few more weeks. The one thing you'll see very different is the aspire test, which is our ninth and 10th grade test, which leads up to a predictive score and helps give us some data on our students for that 11th grade high, high stakes ACT. And that will be used from starting next year to look at growth scores for our high schools as well as we already have those for other levels. So if you go into that document, anyone in the audience, it's linked to the agenda. I'm not going to go back through those, but you should see those and if you have questions, please contact me or one of the principals.
Trish, can you help me understand maybe other people have questions on this, but why does the state embargo the data for so long if there's such an emphasis on it?
Right now they're going through a two week inquiry period. They had a lot of, you know, it's very data driven based on demographics, based on economically, you know, disadvantaged or special numbers, all of those enrollment numbers, full year, how many kids are here full year? So the state gives every district approximately two weeks to go through a checklist to make sure the numbers are lining up. And then they believe that this year they'll have the highest level of inquiry that they've ever had because there were some very big fluctuations in scores. So our principals also have that, I don't know how many, eighteen point, I don't know, checklist, but they have to go through and validate our numbers and just see if there's anything that raises an eyebrow that we need to put an inquiry in. So then they'll make their big statement, duh, and after that, we then get to the top.
Right.
So. We have looked at them, all of our buildings are going through them right now. Lots of good stuff, but publicly we cannot do that yet.
Any other questions about that? All right, we're on to item four B, youth options courses. There's a recommendation that the board, the school board approved the youth option courses for spring of 2018. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Marie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions or discussion?
I'm always wondering, it's a great amount of information there, but it would be, I, for me, it would be beneficial to see if there's a particular course or line of courses that we have many students signing up for so that it's one that we might want to look at, whereas in the way it's laid out there, it's very hard to do that. It's just a lot of data. And I can see where that's an easier way to put the report together, but probably not as easy for us to look at. So even if they were separated into columns, so we could start to see some similarities, you know. I just think it might help us in YouTube, you probably already do this, but for us not so much to look at, okay, are there kids consistently signing up for this and what would it take for us to offer this if we wanted to be able to bring it back in here? Just, just a thought.
So are you speaking to over time, having additional columns out of the requests over time?
That too would be beneficial, but I was speaking specifically for this report here, just to line them up. It's the first time actually that I remember actually getting a report summary like that and that was nice too. Very nice to see a summary, whereas in the past we've gotten all their applications. So I like this better. One more step from this, no one beta column. And from now, I really do like that we're starting to see reports and seeing first page, second page, third page on Excel spreadsheets or maybe it's Google Docs that you're using. It's really nice to be able to compare this year to last year and we can do that moving forward now. If we use the same, hopefully we can make the same reports and just do it your way.
So I remember last year we received, last year we received.
So course request is in here, did I include that?
In the second tab?
Is it in the tab? Is that where you referred to?
Right, they, they just had a summary sign up on that?
No, it's a number of requests. So move it on to applications and of course requested, number of applications. It'll show you the entry of sociology being taught.
Oh yeah, I missed that.
I missed that she did it already.
Yay. I saw the first one, I'm sorry. So do you, so then do you look at these to see, okay, great. I'm sorry, totally missed this.
That's okay, I didn't know if you wanted something more. So I was just taking notes and we got it, yep.
I looked at it on the others, but I missed this. That is interesting.
So I reviewed this over the weekend and last year we had received actually the copies of the actual redacted applications. And so I was looking through the course offerings that had been approved and I sent Jenna an email because I noticed that elementary algebra, trigonometry and something called economic and business statistics were included in the approval list. And so, um, I asked Jenna about that and she replied, you know, the elementary algebra shouldn't be approved. But she said we don't offer a trig course anymore. And, and then she said we, we only have AP statistics. And does that mean we don't have a regular statistics? So we only, we don't have a regular statistics. We just offer AP statistics. So anybody who's going to take our AP statistics, they'd have to get their baseline statistics through an online, where the school would have to pay them to go somewhere else.
I don't know if you're looking at me or Trish.
Yeah. Because you're both kind of nodding and I don't know which one I should ask. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, it's, I just got the information.
Which class Katie are you talking about? Which class do you think is statistics or does it say statistics? I don't have the agenda.
So it said, there was, there was somebody who put economic and business statistics on it. Asked what they wanted and it was approved. And so I questioned that, I asked Jenna about that and she said, um, we only have AP statistics. And, you know, I sent it to her over the weekend, she replied to me mid morning, I was at work. So I didn't have more time, you know, this wasn't in a work session, so I'm having a little trouble. And I don't mean to take everybody's time up, so I'm wondering if I should just say, can we, can we postpone? Because I'm not comfortable yet, I want some more, I guess, information.
Here's one thing, there's a timing issue with it. So, but there's one thing that we, even if we offer it as a school, because kids have the option to get credit for it, taking it from WITC or Fox Valley or River Falls, we don't offer course per course. And I think that has to be factored in. So when I see there's that economic and statistics, time wise, we do need to make some motion this evening, but I see what you're asking, you want, if, I think I do. You're wanting to know if it's a course we offer, why are we approving it? My understanding of that would be because then they can get college credits for it. And our, if our courses are not approved for that, we don't, we aren't really offering any of the courses.
Any, any course that we offer on campus, they, we can, we do not approve for them to take somewhere else, period. That's why when you look at that, we brought on AP psych. Kids used to take psych all the time. We brought on AP psych. Now we do not approve youth options for psych, for example.
But that's AP psych.
But AP means, yeah, anything that's, any class that we have, they can, they don't have the option of taking it elsewhere and having it approved if we offer a similar or comparable course on campus. That class, they may have deemed, I don't know that specific class, they may have deemed very different than AP. AP stats is college level stats. That is a stats class, but it may be a specific stats class that isn't a course, a college pathway, a career pathway for that student. They would have to make that determination of if it's comparable to our AP stats, it should not be on there. If it is a completely, if it's not comparable, then it is approved course.
Right. So I, I understand all that, but then there were other instances where, um, there was one, a student had written down American presidency and I thought, well, certainly we cover that. So I thought, I'm going to go to the, it was at UW online. So I looked and there was no course called that. And there wasn't any course called anything else that that student had written down. And so I had asked then of Jenna too, and I'm like, none of these classes are offered online. And so I just want to make sure that, that we're getting the information that we need to make the decision and that the students don't have unrealistic expectation that, because these were all approved, they were marked down as approved. And I don't want them to be blindsided by the fact that, you know, at the end of the day, you're not going to be. So I don't know where those courses came from, but there is a miscommunication happening somewhere.
We do not have to approve this this evening. I asked you to approve before November thirteenth, so we could add it as a, a action item for our November work session. And, um, we, it's, we should hold to our process of having a topic on the work session and then making the decision at the regular session, just because it's, we have new leadership and we're getting used to a timeline. We didn't quite make that with this topic. So I think it's more inappropriate to move it to our work session for approval. And potentially maybe we could just add the course that we offer for the ones that are not approved. Just to clearly communicate, this is what we believe that we offer that meets this one. And, um, maybe the course description for the other ones.
That's what I'm, yeah, and I, I don't know who I should ask for follow up.
Yep, I will connect with the counselors tomorrow.
Okay.
And we can, oh, Wednesday, September nine tomorrow, but, and we can add some of this information and bring it back to the.
Yeah.
So the work session.
November.
It'll be the work session.
Does that give you enough time still?
I don't understand what the concern is.
Which concern?
The concern that we had, I guess.
That we're.
I'm not following it.
Are you concerned that we're approving courses that we should not be because we offered them here? And I know that the kids will sign up for more than what they can actually take to, because enrollment will fill up. Sometimes they don't get it, so they'll sign up for extra ones too, additional ones that they might be able to get into there. So even though they sign up and we approve their potential, it doesn't guarantee that they won't get it either. Yeah. And they aren't all approved, because I see some that do not have the access on them too, so. We do have a motion on the floor, so that would have to fail for, so I'd like to ask for a vote on it and then we can move it to that work session if you'd like to get more information first.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the youth option courses for spring of 2018. The motion was made by Mary Koloff and seconded by Bob Gunther. So we will call it for a vote. All of those in favor of approving the youth option courses, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay.
Nay. Unless have a roll call, unless you understand how the process works.
I got four to two.
Okay.
Anybody get anything different? All right. Motion passes, four to two.
But you can still get more information if we can on that work session so that we have a better understanding of it for next year.
There's a point to it.
Yeah, there is, because then you're going to get your answers for next year. Because we go through this again, I think it's twice a year actually. So it's, it'd be ahead of the game for the next time. I would still say we can discuss it.
Well, we never discussed it in a work session, it's supposed to be a work session.
So we can now on the November one four, the next time through.
All right. So we have taken action to support or to approve the youth options courses as presented. We will ensure that we have further clarification when they are brought forward to the board for approval for fall.
I'd like to ask for it to be on the work session for next time, just to get some of those questions answered.
Marie, you can email me the request, then I'm going to move it forward. I'm meeting forward to the next agenda item.
Would you like me to email it?
If you would like to request that topic.
So if Katie asked for it and now I am, it's not okay?
Katie has stated that she would no longer like it because we're going to propose for it.
But if I'm saying I would like it, I can't do it now?
I would like to move the meeting forward and have the discussion of agenda items out. So we will be moving on now to item section five, services and facilities. Five A is adopt the 2017-18 Fund 10 budget. There's a recommendation that the school board adopt the 2017-18 Fund 10 budget. Is there anyone willing to make that recommendation?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Marie, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Thanks, Bob. Any discussion or question on the 2017-18 Fund 10 budget?
So this needs to have a number attached to it?
I was wondering of the, the second one, right? It's in the second line, is that the correct figure that you have?
So I gave you this document similar to what you see on a monthly basis.
Right.
Expenditure, some categories under that here. So yes, the total expenditure amount, this is the final culmination of all our work throughout the year. throughout the year. It includes the cash flow borrowing information that we received today as well. So it's the final numbers, as we know, we can see on the back, comparison to what we talked about in September. And so depending if you'd like me to discuss some of this, some of these items, I'm more than happy to do so. Or each item or all at once, however you like. But the motion does have to have the...
So I'll put in my motion to approve the, in the amount of, can I just have you add that forty, Rosell, please, to amend to include the amount of the general fund ten, seventeen million, five hundred, six thousand, sixty-three dollars and eighty-two cents? And Bob would be...
I'm in the second one.
Thank you.
So any questions or discussion?
Is there a levy limit restriction, as much as we can reduce, like, in its value, so? Are you asking about the floor, or it wasn't changed, that doesn't affect us? We are around ninety-nine, we remain at ninety-one.
Okay.
Again, so I don't know if you'd like me to discuss or not. It's, we kind of talked about this at the work session, and I mentioned that things are going to continue. Those things have gone into continuing. Final gravity limit regulation, final FTE, final enrollment.
Anyone need any clarification to vote on the motion currently on the table to approve the 2017-18 Fund X budget of seventeen million, five hundred, six thousand, sixty-three dollars and eighty-two cents? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. Item five B, there is a recommendation that the board certify Fund X tax levy in the amount of five million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. Is there a board member willing to make that motion?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Marie, seconded by Courtney. Any questions for Dave about the tax levy? All right, we'll call a vote on that one. All those in favor of certifying the tax fund levy in the amount of five million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. The last item under our services and facilities is item C, to approve a resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in an amount not to exceed one million, three hundred thousand dollars and zero cents pursuant to section sixty-seven, point one-two, section eight, section A-one of the Wisconsin statutes. Is there a board member willing to make that motion?
So move.
Thank you, Bob. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Marie. Any questions for Dave on that piece? All right. Hearing none, we will call a vote on that item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. The next item on our agenda is community engagement and collaboration. The first item, six A, is the 2017-18 Board of Education Goals. So we had set a goal during our summer retreats to create some board goals related to relationships and accountability. Mark and I pulled together drafts for our work session with the administrators, and we ended up dividing it up into groups, let's, Monday, October ninth, and worked on them. I think what we discovered is that there's a lot of overlap between the two goals and the two group discussions. So Mark and I are wondering if the board would like us to put together a draft that combines the two with suggested success indicators and implementation strategies to bring forward to our November work session for the board to discuss. And then hopefully, we can approve at the November regular session so we can begin working towards those goals. So how would the board like us to proceed on working towards our board goals?
I think that would be awesome.
Brian?
Yeah.
Marie?
That's fine.
Okay. So we will have a draft of a singular goal that will combine both the responsibility and accountability of the work session. The next item is the community education.
Sure. According to one of our ten result statements with the strategic plan that we have a motion this year is the development, further development of the community education program. And Renee is filling that seat right now, working on developing the program. I just asked her if she wanted to say a few words about where we're at right now. We, we have met and discussed the ideas of a quality program. Are we allowed, Renee?
Okay. Well, last spring, I attended what was left of the State Community Ed Association. And the bad news is, they have disbanded. The good news is, yeah, it was my first community ed meeting, and they said, yeah, we're breaking up. And, but the good news is, there's a very strong association in this part of the state called Ice Pack, which is a bunch of letters, again, that stands for the Indian Ed community. And that involves some very strong community ed programs in the middle border. Amory Prescott, for sure, comes up in Richmond. And also Hudson's River Falls and the Big Rivers and Spooners in the heart of the north. Some very strong programs. And so we had a meeting this fall at WITC, which they were also there, the education people from WITC. And I learned a lot. And so then we went back to Dr. Bezek, and we talked. The strategic plan was to roll this out, and we needed to back the train up a little bit. We need an advisory council, which we've started on. I think I have three volunteers so far. I'm not so sure how far, how big we want that committee to get. They, from, in talking with these other programs, they only usually meet once a year. And then we want to move forward and get a catalog developed and roll that out to the community. I think the calendar was our first, had a community ed thing, and that seems to be fairly positive. At least, that's what I'm hearing, anyway. And so when we started thinking about offering classes this fall, suddenly, there were a few roadblocks that we ran into. And if I'm going to be in charge and have my name on it, it's not going to be done poorly. I won't talk about it right now. So I wanted to do it right. I got about fifteen, twelve to fifteen people that want to offer classes. We are, since this is fairly new to Somerset as far as how this is going to be run, we are running into some roadblocks with our, we're going, our custodial staff, for example, or our company that's, they're not used to this. I've already had a few things come up with the hunter safety group already this fall. And so I'm thinking, okay, we can't, we can't just throw this out there until we get these problems solved. So Dr. Bezek and I are working on that, and we're meeting with George, and we're meeting with Jake, and we're going to get that straightened out. And I hope to roll out a catalog probably in January, start signing people up. We're talking about online registration, we're talking about a lot of things. And then offer at least some classes in late winter, early spring to start us off. So that's what we're...
One of the things is, you know, we want to have, we want to have people have a good experience. And we've just been tripping over a few things here, and we're getting them worked out. So we want to make sure that when we kick this thing off and it's rolling, that it's staying, getting better and better.
Thanks, Marie.
Thank you very much.
And the calendar, was ninety-nine percent over there?
It's great. You're never wrong.
Well, we're also finding, if you look at those catalogs, I think, I don't know if I sent any good. But if you look at the catalogs from around the area, they, they throw lots of things in there, and that's going to take a while to put together. Like, I had a lady call me the other day, can we walk in the buildings? It's getting cold, can we walk in the building? That should be offered. The Health Partners offers their classes, the fitness, the training room puts their fitness classes in there. There's, you know, Girl Scouts put their meeting in there, all kinds of things that we can offer. We bring all the community together, I'm working with Becca, so that's what we're adding.
Great.
Thank you. I know there is just a ton of excitement in our community. They're chomping at the bit because this is something that they desire to have in our community and are very excited for it. So thank you for your work and making sure that they'll have a positive experience when we do get started. Any other questions for Renee about that? All right, then, item six C is the district newsletter.
You know, in the past, it's gone out three times during the year. With the advent of the calendar, not advent calendar, but development of the calendar, that basically took the place of that first newsletter. What we're looking at is doing two more, but we're looking at a different format and a little better quality, because the last one we sent out last spring just really wasn't there. So we're still planning on putting two out, but again, we're looking at some type of different format. It's, Dave has a lot of legal notices and things that have to go out. You know, we look at some different things online, but they have to go out to every property owner, not just the people we have. So the electronic piece, you know, one idea is that all the buildings put out a, possibly a monthly or every other month newsletter from each building that they can just send out electronically to their families. That way, we can catch the electronic piece there. But with the bridging Somerset Group, we're also talking about more communication, being the communication hub here. So once we talk with that group, we'll have some more ideas, but we still have to connect with the wider environment. And that's where, like, the calendar goes out to everyone, the newsletter should go out to everyone also, that I don't know what's going on in their schools, so. So the plan is still to put out two more, out in January and the end of the year.
So if people are interested in, like, the Memorial Scholarship Fund and having a piece of information in there, who do they contact currently?
Well, right now, the information has been coming from the buildings, you know, whoever in the buildings. And, you know, I don't know how much community ed's going to get involved with these newsletters, but typically, it would come somehow find its way to the cabinet table via through the principals or however it's been in the past.
So organizations like the Food Pantry and the Scholarship Fund that have had little pieces of that in most of them?
They come from my office, too.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions on that floor? All right. Section seven is seek, cultivate, and develop leaders. We do not have any items under that area of our agenda tonight. The next item on our agenda, item eight, is the consent agenda. Is anyone willing to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
No.
Thank you, Marie. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Courtney.
There were just a few little typos in there, but nothing major. One plural on one, but I can talk to Tia on those. I was just going to ask on one of them.
In a minute?
No, one minute, but I don't know that we do have to send it on one of those last two sessions, special sessions.
Sure. Okay, so you're going to let Tia know about that?
Sure.
All right. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? And motion passes unanimously, six to zero. Item nine is general information. Anything under that to share, anyone? Are you left coming up?
Just our funding, that's it. Everybody wants to consider. Probably muted.
All right. So our final item on our agenda is adjournment. Does anyone wish to make a motion to adjourn?
No.
Thank you, Marie. Is there a second? Thank you, Courtney. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes unanimously, six to zero, and we are adjourned at eight thirty-six P.M.
Katie, is there any changes around the agenda or?
No.
Can we just, like, send it out?
Yeah.